All right, I'm gonna call this meeting to order then. Welcome to tonight's meeting, everybody. I can see some people coming in. Before we begin the meeting, I'd like to take a moment to recognize first the passing of former trustee Anne Cleary Kettles. Excuse me. Anne was on the board from 1973 to 1984. She served as chair from 1981 to 84. Anne's strong belief in student success was one of the many reasons why she became a trustee at WCC. Anne was best known for saying, "It is being able to serve and help in some way that gives you reason to get up in the morning. You need to keep your brain working and to continue helping people." A celebration of life for family and friends will be held next year. Please join me in a moment of silence for former trustee Anne Cleary Kettles. Thank you, everybody. Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Fleming.
Fleming here.
Vice Chair Milliken.
Milliken here.
Treasurer Davis.
Davis here.
Secretary DeVarty.
DeVarty here.
Trustee Hatcher.
Hatcher here.
Trustee Landau.
Landau here.
Trustee McKnight Morton.
McKnight Morton here.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved. Second.
Okay, I heard a first and second. Any discussion on the agenda? Hearing none, Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Fleming.
Fleming, yes.
Vice Chair Milliken.
Milliken, yes.
Treasurer Davis.
Davis, yes.
Trustee Hatcher.
Hatcher, yes.
Secretary DeVarty.
DeVarty, yes.
Trustee Landau.
Landau, yes.
Trustee McKnight Morton.
McKnight Morton, yes.
Thank you. Looking to tab A now, the recommendation is that the Board of Trustees approve the minutes of the October 27th monthly meeting as submitted. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Forward.
Thank you. I heard first and second. Any discussion on the minutes? Hearing none, Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Fleming.
Fleming, yes.
Vice Chair Milliken.
Milliken, yes.
Treasurer Davis.
Davis, yes.
Secretary DeVarty.
DeVarty, yes.
Trustee Hatcher.
Hatcher, yes.
Trustee Landau.
Landau, yes.
Trustee McKnight Morton.
McKnight Morton, yes.
Thank you. Next is our citizen participation. First, we hear from the WCC EA, Ms. Kissel. Are you ready?
I am. Thank you so much.
Go ahead.
So it's November 2020. First of all, congratulations to trustees DeVarty, Fleming, and Hatcher on their successful reelection bids. And thank you for your continued support to WCC and its community. I'd also like to extend a hearty congratulations to Ernesto Carey Harrow for his win to a seat on the Ann Arbor Public School Board. I'm sure he's going to bring a valuable perspective to that community. So regarding WCC EA contract issues, I'm pleased to report that the one act of grievance has been settled. Through open and regular dialogue, we were able to share our positions and work toward a just and equitable agreement. While we are not taxed with grievances at this time, the WCC EA and the administration continue to discuss concerns and use the time to work on a number of issues before we're pushed by any external deadlines. Certainly not having a plan to plan for a full negotiation removes a great deal of pressure from us all. So as the WCCA membership works to help students finish the fall semester successfully and plan for winter 2021, we're also trying to anticipate the impact of the changed holiday season on each of us. For many, they will be remaining at home or with their close circle of friends and family, and there may be little chance to connect in our traditional ways. While this can be disheartening, I remind you of the many facets of sustainability. The UN World Commission on Environment and Development says that sustainable development is development that meets the needs of the present without compromising the ability of future generations to meet their own needs. While complex, this idea of creating sustainable lives in and out of the workplace animates much of the WCC EA's conversations. Times indeed are changing, and as we look toward the future and work through the issues of today, it's imperative that we do so without compromising the future. Our interconnectedness requires that we continue to work toward equitable and sustainable solutions that will see us through the difficult times we're now in and set us up for a bright future. And with that, I wish you all a wonderful and restful Thanksgiving holiday. Thank you.
Thank you. Vanessa, were there any public comments received?
No, there was no public comments.
And were there any written communications?
Yes, there was one received that I sent out earlier.
Yep, and I did see that one. Okay, thank you. Moving on to special reports. First, we're going to hear from EVP Blakey to talk to us about The Voice.
Well, good evening. It's my pleasure to introduce Pete Luskovich, who's our Director of Student Development and Activities, who will talk about all the awards and accolades that The Voice, the Washinau Voice, and our advisor Judy McGovern have received over the last few months.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Pete Luskovich, and I'm Director of Student Development. I'm honored to introduce the Students and Advisor of the Washinau Voice in recognition of their recent awards presented by the National College Media Association and the Associated Collegiate Press. Members of the Washinau Voice who are with us tonight to receive recognition include this year's editor, Zelio Conch, Deputy Editor, Deborah De Stefani, Digital Editor, Vern Gong, Photo Editor, Torrance Williams, Staff Writer, Kristi King, Staff Writer, Ian Loomis, Graphic Designer, Jessica Pace, Graphic Designer, Victoria Hoon, Videographer, Eric Lee, Last Year's Editor, Lily Kajowski, and Last Year's Deputy Editor, Claire Convis. I'd also like to recognize Judy McGovern, Advisor to the Washinau Voice, and the 2019-2020 Washinau Voice Student Journalists for all of the hard work and dedication that led to these awards. In lieu of traveling to the national conference this year, the Washinau Voice team experienced a virtual collegiate-associated press conference in October. At this virtual conference, they had the opportunity to learn new journalist techniques, receive professional critiques on their work, and compete in the College Media Association and Associated Collegiate Press Annual Awards Contest. And I'm proud to announce the Washinau Voice team was awarded the following: Second place for Best Written Special Section from the College Media Association for their special report on COVID-19 pandemic. This is an especially impressive award considering that their competition included many four-year institutions. If you're interested in checking out the special report, head to washinauvoice.com and click on the PDF issue on the side. The second award I'd like to mention tonight is an honorable mention to Lily Kajowski for Reporter of the Year from the Associated Collegiate Press. This was the second year in a row in which she was recognized in this capacity for her work and dedication. And finally, I'd like to express my gratitude, and it is my honor to acknowledge Judy McGovern, who received the College Media Association Advisor Award. This award recognizes Judy's commitment and dedication to providing guidance, education, and support for our student journalists here at Washinau Community College. Since 2015, Judy has helped numerous students learn the ropes and launch their career in journalism. Thank you, Judy, for all that you do. And to address the Board of Trustees, I'd like to introduce Lily Kajowski, the Fall 2019 and through Winter 2020 Editor of the Washinau Voice.
Hi, thank you so much for having me. I'm really excited to be here.
Thanks for being here with us, Lily. Do we have the award presentation to put up? Hang on. Is this the first award we're gonna do? Okay, there it is. Okay, thank you so much for that. Lily, on behalf of President Blanca and the Board of Trustees, I present this certificate to you. You will get a real, live copy. We're doing this virtual, obviously. But we're so very, very proud of your accomplishments. Thank you for being our editor and being part of The Voice.
Thank you so much. I really miss it. Honestly, it's so nice to just be here and pretend that I'm back.
I can understand that. Being in that voice room was one of the best times I ever had in a college setting and a work setting because you learn how to collaborate with different kinds of people all in that room, you know, with designers and editors and writers. It was really a unique experience, wasn't it?
Yeah, I think it was one of the best experiences of my life, honestly.
Thank you for that. Do we have the next award for The Voice? Thank you. And to The Voice team, on behalf of President Blanca and the Board of Trustees, we present you with this certificate. Again, virtual, you'll get a real one. Thank you very much for your dedication, for putting out an amazing paper. I've said it before, and I'll say it again, I think it's one of the best papers in this region. And like Pete said, you were going up against four-year universities. We always go up against four-year universities at the Collegiate Press awards, and you stunned me and amazed me every time. It was beautiful reporting. And then do we have the third certificate? For Ms. McGovern? And last but not least, for Judy McGovern, on behalf of President Blanca and the Board of Trustees, we present you with this certificate. Thank you so much for serving these students at The Voice and helping them to collaborate and put out a really great paper. I think this might be the first time we have gotten the Student Advisor Award. So I'm very proud of you. Thank you so much.
Okay.
All right, yeah. Virtual applause. Thank you so much. Yeah, thank you. Would either Pete or EVP Blakey like to say anything else to wrap this up? Are we good?
Yeah, I just want to say congratulations again. Thank you for everyone's hard work. You never cease to amaze me.
Thank you.
They make us very proud.
Indeed. Thank you so much. Okay, thank you for that. We are going on to reports. Hang on, I need to bring up my tab. There we go, tab B. Personnel recommendations. The recommendation is that the Board of Trustees approve the monthly personnel recommendations as submitted. Do I hear a motion?
So moved. DeVarty moved.
Forward.
Okay, I heard a first and second. Any discussion on the personnel recommendations? Okay, hearing none, Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Fleming.
Fleming, yes.
Vice Chair Milliken.
Milliken, yes.
Treasurer Davis.
Davis, yes.
Secretary DeVarty.
DeVarty, yes.
Trustee Hatcher.
We do not hear you, Ruth.
I had a question, so I guess I will pass.
Oh, I'm sorry. I did not hear you when I asked.
That's all right. I was muted.
Okay.
Can I ask my question, or should we conclude the vote?
Go ahead and ask your question.
I just wanted to know, the new vice president is listed as a replacement. And I'm thinking that that's not the case, that it's a new position. Is that correct?
Am I, I'm on, right?
Yes.
Go ahead. Well, it is, but it isn't. It is a replacement for an Associate Vice President, Brendan Prebo, who had a similar position, almost the same position. But what we did is we expanded that position to include government relations and to include more of marketing, more public relations, actually. He was more of marketing and communications. So it is, but it's, so let's play it this way. It's a new title. It's an upgrade because it's a vice president instead of an associate vice president. But that is the authorized strength that we use to hire this position.
For HR, could I have revised copies of the organizational charts for page 21 and 20?
Yes.
Thank you. I'm sorry to interrupt the vote.
That's okay. Are you prepared to vote on this?
I'll vote yes.
Okay, thank you. Please continue the roll call, Vanessa.
Trustee Hatcher.
Yes, Hatcher.
Trustee Landau.
Landau, yes.
Trustee McKnight Morton.
We can't hear you. Thank you. I heard you there. All right, thank you. All right, let's go to tab C, the financial report. The recommendation is that the Board of Trustees receive the financial report for October 2020 as follows: General Fund, Deferred Maintenance Fund, Capital Fund, and Combined Schedule of Investments, All Funds. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
I hear one? I hear a second?
Forward.
Support. Any discussion, or I should say, EVP Johnson, do you want to add anything here to this for us?
Yes, thank you, Trustee Fleming. Yes, if you could turn to the two pages in, please, there it is. For the board, this month is looking a lot like the September report in that the fall tuition revenue is below budget, although our credit hours were actually a little bit better than budget because most of our credits were distance learning at a lower rate that really results in the lower tuition revenue. And the fees follow because we were able to offer most labs, but at reduced capacity. And so our contact hour fees were lower. A good portion of that revenue was offset, though, by higher state appropriations because once again, our budget had assumed that we would have about a 10% reduction in state aid, and that that did not happen, so that'll be a positive variance for the year. And then the other and auxiliary activity revenues are below because contact training and other non-credit training can't be offered face-to-face at the same pace that we would have liked. And then conference services were below revenue. So we were about 1.5 million below in revenue. Expenses, however, were also below budget to the tune of about 2.9 million in total. If you could scroll down just a little bit, please. You'll see that we're down about 2.9 million. And that's really due to three things: that our full-time vacancies are higher than budget, our part-time expenditures-
She looks like she has a quarter.
Because we're not on campus, was below budget. And also our non-personal expenditures, because we're not on campus, were below budget. So total expenditures were about 2.9 million below budget. And then last but not least, down, you'll see the Health and Fitness Center shows a negative variance to budget. And that really reflects the fact that we were not open for the first three months of the year without any member revenue in that, and that reflects that. So that in total, we show a small surplus of just under $1 million on a year-to-date basis for the first four months of the year. And that's my report.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
So Vice President Johnson, on the Health and Fitness Center, we did reopen at a limited capacity. But the governor has put out some new guidance, and the local health department has as well. Is that going to affect our ability to continue?
Actually, not. As it stands now, we're still able to offer individual workout sessions, but not the group fitness classes. And we had very few group fitness classes that we were offering, so we had to shut that down. So we still are open, regular hours at a much-reduced capacity.
And then one further question. I notice when I do my walking around campus on warmer days here in Ann Arbor, college students out doing workouts in front of their computers. Like there's a leader leading three or four, even half a dozen students doing workouts. Has there been any consideration to having some of our, I don't know, our workout sessions done through the fitness center, done remotely? As a distant, like, parallel to what we're doing with distance learning?
We actually are offering that through Power Wellness, who is our fitness center operator. They are starting to offer remote fitness classes as part of the benefits to our members.
And can we, in the future, or at some point, I know it's going to take a while for that to ramp up, but I'd be interested in getting some sort of a report on how that is going and if we're seeing what we're seeing in terms of people signing up for those remote sessions.
Certainly. Be glad to.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions for Bill? Okay. If there's no other questions, Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Fleming.
Fleming, yes.
Vice Chair Milliken.
Milliken, yes.
Treasurer Davis.
Davis, yes.
Secretary DeVarty.
DeVarty, yes.
Trustee Hatcher.
Hatcher, yes.
Trustee Landau.
Landau, yes.
Trustee McKnight Morton.
McKnight Morton, yes.
Thank you. Next is tab D, the Facilities Development Report. EVP Johnson, do you want to highlight anything here?
Just a couple. Thank you, Chair Fleming. If you were to look at the deferred maintenance and look at line 11, you'll note that for the DE building, the entry door replacements that we deferred that until spring, we had sent that out for bids, and the bids came in much higher than we had originally expected. So we're bringing some more clarity to the bid process, and we'll get that project underway in the springtime. If you go to the next page, please, item number 22, you'll see for the MLB Retention, Pond, Drudge, and Treatment, that that project is pretty much done. We have finished up the regrading of the sides and putting in the grass. We actually created a little bit of a rock garden out in front of one of the sitting areas there. And we have a bit more work to do that will be done in the spring that relates to the fountains and the irrigation to make sure that we can keep the vegetation growth at the right level. And we'll finish that up in the springtime. Item number 28, the Public Safety Stair Replacement. These are the stairs that go from one end of the parking structure down to the ground level for the LA and the SC buildings. And those were quite badly rusted out, so we've ordered the new rails. They'll be aluminum rails so that they won't rust out in the future. And we finished up the concrete related to that. And those are the three items that I wanted to point out for the Board of Trustees. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Bill?
I have one question. What is the number 25, the Roof Fall Protection Study?
We, Trustee Milliken, we wanted to reassess to make sure that the, that when folks are up on the roof, we're working on the proper barriers were up to protect the workers. So we have finished that assessment. And then we will be putting up the proper railings in the right spots to make sure that our workers have adequate safety protections.
Understood. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions on the Facilities Report?
I would like to ask a question. Bill, on line number 32, the Sewage Lift Station Pump Replacement, could you speak a little bit about that?
Trustee McKnight Morton, so we have a sewage lift station that is, so we have to lift the sewage from a lower level up to a higher level so that they can get into the county sewer system. And that pump is due to be replaced, and so it's out for bid.
Okay, and one more, on line 17, regarding the wide, campus-wide roof replacement repairs, are the roofs and repairs, are they going to be with sustainable material plants and such like we've had before?
They are not. That's actually a specially-designed roof. So for instance, we have a roof like that above the Public Safety Building, as one example. And so these roofs are the non-sustainable roofs that we are going to replace because we have leakage in certain areas.
So it's not a total roof replacement?
Correct.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any other questions on facilities? All right. Next on the agenda are remarks of the Board of Trustees. Would any trustees like to say anything?
Hi, this is Trustee Davis. I want to give a huge congratulations to Trustee DeVarty, Trustee Hatcher, and Trustee Fleming on their reelection to the board. I'm so happy that you three are still among us, and I thank you. And I can't wait to give you a big hug when it's legally possible to do that. It's great to have you again.
Thank you.
I'm looking forward to my orientation, right?
I'd like to say something.
Go ahead, Dave.
I just wanted to thank our administration for showing such strong leadership in putting in protocols to address the pandemic and to bring learning available, our distance learning in particular. I've heard from several people who know and are related to people, both at Washinau Community College faculty members and University of Michigan faculty members. And across the board, they've voiced a lot of admiration for the administrative support given by our administration to the WCC faculty. And for those that know and are related to some people, faculty members at U of M, they contrast the strong administrative support for distance learning provided to faculty here at Washinau Community College to kind of a dearth of adequate support for faculty who are just beginning to come to terms with changing plans, changing their coursework from offering in-person to online. And I think that speaks highly for the long-term investment we've made in distance learning and in our administration for really leading the way and providing support to our faculty members. So I just want to point that out. So I, I just want to point that out. It's something that has, I've heard from several different points of places. And I think it's worth sharing with the administration.
Thank you.
I'd like to say something real quick.
Diana first, okay.
Yeah, thank you. A couple of things. One, I want to give my congratulations to Dave, Ruth. And you Christina for winning your elections. I, I know it's tough and hard, but I didn't hear from you guys, so I, I guess you had it under control. That's great. But also. I want to say that I, I, I feel that. We're doing so much and. I, I can't speak for the rest of the board, but I just feel like I'm still not in the loop because we're doing Zooms. And it kind of leaves me like I'm missing something and that's just the way I feel because we're not at a board, even though. You know, we're getting these presentations and we're talking, but I still miss that ambiance, I guess I want to say, that connectiveness with us together. All right. So I got that off my chest. Anyway. My other thing is I would like to make a huge shout out and commendation to Linda Blakey. And helping me help a student. And Linda, I want to say thank you so much. This person is really happy that she is able to come to class or start classes. So I just want to say that sometimes, you know, we just have to. Not try to go above anybody, but just try to help students out because they really need our help. If they call you, they need our help. Thank you.
Welcome.
I think I saw Ruth's hand. Did you have?
Oh, we're going to be presented with this examity program for examining and I wondered. If Julie Kissel is still on board, I just wonder what the faculty. Input has been in that decision and. Their, whether they like it or not, or whether they've used it a lot, or what's going on with that?
I'm sorry, Rose, we don't hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, go try again. There you go. Yep, we hear you.
Okay, Dr. Hearns, are you able to answer that question?
No, and I don't know if Pete's on the line, but when we did our initial about, I think in November, in November, when we did the presentation. There was some information about when this was initially chosen. There was a committee of faculty who were teaching online. One faculty member that comes to mind, who I know uses a lot. And has been giving us a lot of feedback because it's not been easy over these last couple of months, was Susan Dentel and a handful of faculty. When we initially chose it, I'd have to say exam is somewhat of the Cadillac of tools. And we've had continuous feedback from the faculty about how it's working and why we use it and what they use it for. So the faculty have been consistently engaged in our usage of exam.
And it's been a positive response from them.
It's been a positive. Yes, but I have to say that since we've been in COVID, it's been challenging because. They had the same problems we did in having to evacuate their offices and. Work through a lot of that, the challenges, because it was challenging at first. But they're back on track and we're real pleased with the services we're getting for.
That's good to hear. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hearns.
Thank you. Are there any other board members with comments? All right. Thank you, everybody. Next, the president's remarks. Are you ready, Dr. Blanca?
Yes, I am.
All right, go ahead.
I too would like to congratulate trustee Hatcher, trustee DeVarty, and trustee Fleming. For, first of all, for agreeing to give up six more years of your life. And working with us and your commitment to the college. If all you've done in the last six years and trustee DeVarty, thank you for the comment you made about online. I really do appreciate that and I know all, I speak for all of us in saying that. You know, yes, that was, we all work together and, and this is where a good board is important too. Because we may come up with initiatives and bring that information to you. But you know, we're only as good as a board is. And it's because you understood what the future held. And you took the time to read all the stuff that came before you. That you were able to vote and to show favor upon the, the various initiatives that we were doing. So, thank you. Thank you. I appreciate all of that and I speak on behalf of our whole team in saying that to you. It is a team effort. So the other thing I'd like to recognize is that. I'd like to formally welcome Lori Muton to college. And also like to tell the board about our Women's Council Leadership Virtual Event. It was Thursday on November 12th. It was phenomenal. There were over a hundred women that participated in the virtual event. And this is where we identified where three sheros are nominated. It, it really was tremendous. So Phil Snyder, thank you for the work that you did. I know he was on here. I don't know where he went just now, but I didn't know if he wanted to say a few things. But it was very successful. I'd also like to recognize the chair of the Women's Council, Meredith Miller. Really did an outstanding job in working on this. So that was, if you weren't able to attend that event. And would like to see the video of it, please let us know because it was very touching. Phil, is there anything you'd like to share about the event?
Dr. Blanca, I wanted to say that in addition to the 100 women, there was one man there and. The caliber of the speakers was very impressive, a lot of takeaways from their remarks.
Thank you. Thank you for attending. Thank you.
You bet.
Not to mention, it was a great celebration and a good fundraiser for the Women's Council Emergency Fund. That was established some years ago with the lower expenses of doing it online. We were able to raise money for that as well. So the sheros were all tremendous. Our, our guest speaker, Najab Azzie, who runs Zaman International. Who's helped a quarter million people worldwide was simply remarkable. I think. Dr. Blanca and trustee Milliken will agree with that. Actually, the next day she was on, on a local NBC station. I watched her. But she is remarkable and now a good friend of ours and really engaged with us. So those of you that attended, thank you. It was a great event.
She was very articulate. Yeah.
Well, thank you. And, and thank you, trustee Milliken for attending. Also, we had our Veterans Day celebration on, and thank you Chair Fleming for attending the event. And I'd also like to thank Pete Leskovich and the student alumni, veteran student alumni that participated in the event. And last but not least, I'd like to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. And again, we have a lot to be thankful for. First of all, we're still talking. All of us have been. We started in March when the COVID started and thank God, all of us that are here have been helping. We're fortunate that our faculty, our administration, our staff, our students. You and our community are doing well. We do, you know, of course pray for those that are having challenging times right now. But for the rest, thank you so much for all the extra effort that everyone has put in. And trustee McKnight Morton, I know what you mean about feeling like you're out of the loop with the Zoom. But you know, this is something that we, everyone, students, faculty, all of us are trying to grasp. So we certainly understand how you feel. Feeling out of the loops. Sometimes it's how we all feel. So thank you for still hanging in there and I appreciate all of you. Thank you so much. That's it. Thank you.
Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Yes, thank you. Okay, moving to old business, Tab E. The student renovation. Project. The recommendation is that the Board of Trustees approve a contract with Fishback in the amount of 307,000 to provide. The engineering services required to design the replacement of, of the student center HVAC system. Do I hear a motion?
So moved. Second.
And a second, okay. Any discussion on this project? Any questions for EVP Johnson on the student center HVAC?
This is just to pay for engineering services, so planning.
Correct. The planning. Okay, hearing no questions, Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Fleming.
Fleming, yes.
Vice Chair Milliken.
Milliken, yes.
Treasurer Davis.
Davis, yes.
Secretary DeVarty.
DeVarty, yes.
Trustee Hatcher.
Hatcher, yes.
Trustee Landau.
Landau, yes.
Trustee McKnight Morton.
McKnight Morton, yes.
Thank you. Moving to Tab F, the recommendation for a new program for 202021. EVP Hearn, would you like to comment on this?
So yes, I would. You know, we have brought some other three plus one articulation agreements to the board from Wayne State. And we're, we have yet another one that we actually have students who are very interested in. This program, as you all will note on Tab F, will allow students to transfer 87 credits to Wayne State. And a handful of those credits actually will work towards a master's degree if students decide to matriculate further. It transfers from our welding technology program. And earlier in the year, we actually had Wayne State on campus to talk about this possible articulation agreement with many of our students and alum. And many of them were very, very excited about it. So we're excited to present the, this program to the board. And it's a good step and a stronger relationship for us to have and solidify with Wayne State.
My understanding is that we do have a, a number of students entrusted in this program and they want to sign up and apply for financial aid. Is that the case?
Absolutely. Right now, we got a, a handful of students who are talking to the advisor every day about this program.
And, and. We need to approve this in order for that process to continue. Is that right?
Yes, we do. Yes, it would be awesome.
That's why.
I'd like to move that we. Move this to action for at tonight's meeting.
Thank you. Do I hear a second on that? Okay, so it's been moved and seconded to make this an action. Any discussion on making this an action? Okay, Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Fleming.
Fleming, yes.
Vice Chair Milliken.
Milliken, yes.
Treasurer Davis.
Davis, yes.
Secretary DeVarty.
DeVarty, yes.
Trustee Hatcher.
Hatcher, yes.
Trustee Landau.
Landau, yes.
Trustee McKnight Morton.
McKnight Morton, yes.
Thank you. This is now an action item. Are there any other questions about this and what we're doing? Anything else for EVP Hearn? Okay, hearing none. I, I need a motion to vote on this.
I have one question.
Oh wait, I'm sorry. I hear a question.
Vice President Hearns is, does this, is this going to be a pretty unique program in the region? It sounds, it sounds like there's nothing like it around.
You know what? It would be because the, that they could really. Process, not process, the closest that a student could get a bachelor's degree at moving from welding would be at Ferris. So this would be a very unique program for us to have and, and a unique partnership with Wayne State.
Thank you.
What would the employment opportunities be for graduates of this program?
Well, you know what? So a lot of these students are going to work, some of them alongside engineers. And this is more of an applied engineering program. So there's a variety of jobs that students could have specifically in welding or in engineering type areas. So it's engineering technology, so it's more applied, but you know, it's, the, the jobs are as lucrative in some cases as engineering positions.
Thank you. Any other questions on the program? Okay, I need a motion to vote on this? Do I hear a motion?
So moved. I move, we approve this new program.
All right, in a second.
Support.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Fleming.
Fleming, yes.
Vice Chair Milliken.
Yes.
Treasurer Davis.
Davis, yes.
Secretary DeVarty.
DeVarty, yes.
Trustee Hatcher.
Hatcher, yes.
Trustee Landau.
Landau, yes.
Trustee McKnight Morton.
McKnight Morton, yes.
Thank you, everybody. The students appreciate it too, I'm sure.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Tab G, the network infrastructure upgrade contract. Mr. Kruger, would you like to comment on this?
Yes, I would. I'd like to share my screen if that's okay. Looks like the other person is still sharing. Okay, you should be able to see my screen titled Network Infrastructure Upgrade.
Yes.
Okay, so first of all, thank you so much for the opportunity to talk to you about our network infrastructure needs and the associated network infrastructure upgrade. Project. We're going to jump right into it. And talk about the following items, an overview of the network. An assessment that we did, a multi-year plan, what the current need is. A request of the board and we'll open it up for questions. So network overview, as the backbone of our communications platform, the network infrastructure enables phone. Email, video, and web communications which are interwoven into all aspects of WCC operations. And as a result of the pandemic and the increased use of virtual classrooms and remote virtual campus operations. A reliable network is all the more critical. Now, components of that network include the following. A core switch, which is basically the, the brains of the organization. It basically acts as the gateway for the campus and the gateway to the internet. And distribution switches, which generally are for a single building. And then the access layer switches really are spread throughout a building that then provide access to the various, you know, computers, printers. Access point devices, those type of things. I, I hope that diagram there helps. So one of the first things that was done when Lucian came on board is did an assessment. And basically what, what they did is they did assessment based on those three goals that you see on the screen. We want to ensure we have supportive equipment that is compatible with other current equipment and that is patched for security purposes. These are all very important, obviously. So most of the equipment we have. Is end of life in 2008 and 2015. It is outdated and subject to failures. And when, when it comes to electronic equipment like this, it's not if it's going to fail, but, but when. And it's not compatible, which makes upgrading equipment more difficult. So it creates more problems. As far as the goal to ensure we have redundancy to negate network downtime if one item goes down. Basically, our, our core switch had power redundancy, but it wasn't wired correctly to provide full redundancy. So what that meant was if one of them went down, we were going to have a widespread network problem. And the distribution switches were not redundant or are not redundant at all. And then finally, the goal was to ensure the equipment wiring can handle the speeds necessary for both. On-campus virtual and online offerings and the current equipment wiring is inadequate. Okay, so we came up with a multi-year plan. Actually, we came up with a two-year plan and then stretched that to a three-year plan due to the financial implications of COVID. So year one, the core distribution and access layer switches, the Wi-Fi controllers. And some access points in 50% of our single mode fiber. What we had is multi-mode fiber and single mode is. Much faster and much more appropriate. Year two, a distribution and access layer switches, data center switches, 50% of the single mode fiber and access points. And then in year three, our plan is access layer switches, access points, and reassess the gaps and address those gaps as appropriate. Okay, so what is our current need? So in order to provide the infrastructure on which to build and enhance our online offerings. Including teaching, learning, and other remote virtual services while also preventing network failures, latency, and a sluggish network experience. It is critical that we upgrade the network infrastructure. So what we are proposing that we upgrade this year is the core switches. That we purchased distribution switches, access layer switches, and we also need single mode fiber. Now, that is currently out to bid. So that will be brought up at a future board meeting. But those are our current needs. And a request of the board is that the college obtained my deal, state of Michigan. State of Michigan approved purchasing consortium, quote, "from an approved vendor." The college recommends that the Board of Trustees approve a contract to purchase network infrastructure equipment from CDW on about not to exceed 1.175 million. Now, I'd like to explain a little bit about this consortium. What the consortium does is it bids out products at the state level at scale. So that gives us a huge advantage, huge advantage when it comes to purchasing at prices that at Washtenaw Community College, we couldn't come close to doing. So this, this, you know, my deal, if you will, is, as you may recall, when we talked about the Wi-Fi upgrade project, which we did a few months ago, that was also a my deal through CDW, and that also went very well. So with that, I hope that was clear. That was kind of in a rush. I apologize for that. But it's something that's fairly critical.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
The 1.7 some million, is that broken over a certain period of time? I would imagine it's not all at one time. So is it quarterly? Is it annually? How this money is being paid?
Yes, so that 1.175 million, that's what we're requesting for this specific purchase. Actually, the, the entire three-year project is, is much more than that. But it, but it was, it was broken down into not two years, but three years. So, so the entire infrastructure to do that, and it's entirely, is, is up around $5 million. The, the, the equipment that we're talking about is very expensive. And obviously, it's, it's critical that we buy the right equipment so that it's going to make sure it works. Did I answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Chair Fleming, with your insight into these matters, do you have any thoughts to, to share with us on the proposal?
Um, everything seems straightforward to me to replace the network backbone. I know a few years ago, we did a major extension of the Wi-Fi network. And that was maybe five years ago before even our new guys were here. Um, so yeah, I'm not surprised that the switches need to be upgraded. I cannot recall in the last five years a, a major switch upgrade. So it seems due to me and the price, it seems right.
Thank you.
So how often would the switch needs to be replaced?
Depends on the switch. I would think a major appliance like this, I don't know, maybe six to 10 years? What, what do you think, Mr. Kruger, on a major backbone switch?
Yeah, so I'd like to say, you know, seven, eight years is, is probably a good target. Sometimes if you have the right redundancy, you can push that a little bit. Realizing that if you have your redundancy, you're going to be okay. But without redundancy, it's, it's, you know, too long, obviously.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
So if we, I know this is on for a vote tonight, it's for next meeting. But if we move on, if we move ahead with this 1.2 million dollars, are we essentially buying, are, are we committing then to the $5 million three-year program? Even though we haven't seen that, that really a flushed out, a flushed out plan in terms of how much it would cost? And then I noted in your PowerPoint, there was something that's out to bid. Is that going to be in addition to the 1.2 million that we're looking at here?
Yeah, that would be, that would be fiber and that would be in addition, correct.
And do you have a range that that, you're expecting that might come in at?
I'm expecting that to come in, I think, around 200,000, maybe a little over 200,000, if I remember correctly.
If I may answer your question, Trustee DeVarty, in action, I'm going to ask Vice President Johnson to help me with this. But as you know, we talk about our three-year budget projections. This, this, I, we did project this expense for this year. And we've also included it in the next two years as well. It is, it's, so it's not as if you have to buy $5 million because you just bought this. But if we don't get, you know, so it's not like the other stuff we buy where, you know, you're committed. But we're probably going to have to do all of this.
Right.
Because of where we're at with the network right now. Did you want to add anything, Bill, financially? Or did I say that correctly?
Yeah, President Blanca, we have, the three-year plan says that we'll spend about 4.7 million over the three years, and this is the first year of that. The 1.45 million was budgeted, the board approved that budget. And we have transferred that money into a technology improvement fund. And this 1.175 is going to be funded out of that money. So, yeah, it's a three-year plan that, that, that we have this funded for.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions on tab G?
My, my question is, seeing how technology is constantly changing, and we're talking about three years and five years out, what this monies that we're, we're committing to, is that going to cover that, all the changes in technology?
So, is that a question for me?
Yes.
Yeah, so we did the assessment, obviously, prior to COVID. And then, you know, we reassessed kind of the path we were going. So I don't think anyone has a crystal ball telling you where the future's going. But we've, we've, we've made recommendations. We're going down a path to facilitate really the, the increased use of network and virtual and really, you know, everything that we do. So if I, if I understand your question properly, then yes, we, we, we think we have a plan that understands where the future is going and what we need to do. You know, that could change, obviously, but we've, we've certainly kept that in mind as we came up with what the, what we think the path forward looked like.
Okay, but my question basically is, because technology changes. So we get it now, year one. So in the first year, is that going, because technology changed, are we going to be assessed a higher rate? And by the time year, year five comes, three and five comes, is that going to be something more increased? And we have to come back, you have to come back to the board to ask for more money, seeing how we've already agreed on 5 million?
Okay, yes, I'm, I'm sorry. I didn't understand your question properly. But yeah, so generally speaking, with, with network gear and with the type of things that we're talking about, the prices, you have tendency to go down, but, but, but the capabilities go up. So I think we've tried to forecast that in what we're, in what we're looking at. So I do not anticipate, you know, a, a need to go back for, for more. I, I, I think the, the assessment was done well. The, the budget seems to make sense. And I think we have a good plan with, we, we kind of have a good feeling with, with where pricing goes, where technology goes. And so I think we're well positioned here again. The future is hard to predict, but I think we understand the market pretty well. So I think we're in pretty good shape.
I would agree with that, too.
Okay, okay. All right. You know, I just don't want to see someone keep coming back to the board and asking for more money because of the price and the technology has changed. That's all I'm saying. Because, you know, that's almost like nicking and dyming us when we've already agreed on a certain amount of money.
Yeah, I certainly, and that's, that's certainly not, not our intention in any way, shape, or form.
Okay.
The good news is this particular bundle is asking about the, the network switches, which are sitting on the backbone. Those things, pretty much, you just set them and forget them. And they sit there and chug like an appliance for, you know, however long that we have them. So I don't see anything significantly changing with this backbone technology. And I agree with Mr. Kruger when he says that prices are likely to come down on the, the target equipment that they're looking at. So I think, I think you can be reasonably reassured.
Okay, okay. All right, that sounds good.
Yeah.
I have it in my notes so that if it does happen, then you can come back and say.
Yeah, it's been recorded.
You, you can slap me on the, the wrist if you like. I think you heard Dave had a question.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm not conversant with this my deal system. So is, it's a State of Michigan puts out for bids from multiple contractors. And it's to supply multiple people affiliated, like it's not just WCC, but it's other colleges or cities or municipalities or whoever. I, could you just explain a little bit of how the my deal thing works? And what the price advantages we might see by participating with this quote through that process?
Yeah, Trustee DeVarty, this is Bill Johnson. So the, the, the my deal, it's that the State of Michigan bids out a, a number of things related to both the state and all the state municipalities. And so, for instance, for this particular equipment, the State of Michigan wanted to get bids related to communications and tele, and telecommunications. And they actually had estimated the total purchase value over a 10-year period of about 1.2 billion dollars related to telecommunications, communications. And so it really is the, the strength of that volume that they were able to get bids from multiple vendors that would allow them to drive the price down. And so the college, as an agency of the State of Michigan, is able to participate with the my deal purchasing consortium and enjoy that kind of bulk volume pricing.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions on tab G? All right, thank you, everybody. Oh, wait.
Yeah, I do.
Okay, go ahead, Diana.
Is this a part of the broadband?
No, this is network backbone switches. Broadband is the internet connectivity.
Okay.
So, um.
The reason I'm bringing that up is because one of the issues through MCCA at some, some community colleges is about trying to expand broadband through the colleges. And I'm wondering, how can, are we doing it now or do we need to do it?
I think, I think in the past, we've looked at our internet connection with Merit. And Mr. Kruger, correct me if I'm wrong, do we still have a burstable pipe if we need it?
Yes, we do.
Okay, we took care of that, Diana.
Okay, okay, good. Because I, I didn't know, because they were asking about how many schools, and I couldn't answer that because I didn't know that, you know, what was going on. So now that we do have broadband and they're saying how to increase it, so we, we are, we're right there.
Yeah, we're, we're, I think we're where we should be with Merit.
Okay, great. All right. Thank you very much.
Any other questions on network infrastructure? Good questions, everybody. You quiz, you quiz me. All right, moving on to tab H then, if we're ready. Examity, examity, learning validation. EVP Hearn's, would you like to comment on this?
Yes, and we talked about this a little bit earlier in the meeting. I think it's important to note in this recommendation that we're asking to increase the spend for examity, which we had already increased last year. But $50,000 of this would be covered by CARES funding. And we believe that the current increase that we need is solely because we have so many courses that are virtual and online, that we do have an increased need for online proctoring. And it actually referenced in the, in the discussion here in the document that it was May 2016 when we first started using examity. And, you know, again, the faculty came together, decided in the bullet list here, kind of what was needed. And those services are still offered by examity and are being used, of course, more now that we're in this COVID situation.
Okay. Are there any questions on tab H for EVP Hearn's?
Is there any need for this to be moved to approval today? Does that help at all or is it okay for January? December?
December.
December. It's okay for December.
You're, you're okay?
Okay.
Yeah, we're just planning for, because we, we see the rates increasing already.
Okay.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Dave.
Question. So for the first year, the CARES Act is essentially going to kick in enough money that it reduces our out-of-pocket costs for the college to what we had previously approved. It looks, going forward, are we, we're not anticipating additional CARES funding at this point. So really, it's looking like it's going to be no negative impact on our budget for the, for the present budget year. But in subsequent budget years, if we continue to see this demand, we'll be paying more, we'll be budgeting more for this service, it looks like, as I look at this. Is that true?
That, that will be true, but we'd have to come back with another resolution because that would mean that we're not back on campus. So, so, so the preface to this is that the reason we have this increase, the sole reason we have this is because we don't have an active testing center right now. And there's no in-person classes where they could proctor tests in a classroom. And so that's, that's the unique reason we need this from a, because, it's because of COVID. So I mean, assumption is that, you know, hopefully, we'll be back on campus at some point next year. And we'll be back to normal for some portion of our courses, you know, that we are now covering online and having a proctor using examity.
So I would say, I, I'm, I'm looking at this that if this is just one year, essentially the CARES Act is covering our increase in.
Correct, absolutely.
And then going forward, we'll have to revisit what the situation is.
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions on this? All right, thank you. All right, next adjournment of our meeting. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Support.
Okay, I hear first and second. Any discussion on adjourning?
Captain, oh, no, because I enjoy all of your company. I'll be voting you.
I'm a little, I'm a little intimidated by Captain Kirk, but other than that, I'm.
Yeah, I know. I see him in the background.
Not Kirk, that's.
I've been waiting for him to tap you on the shoulder.
Oh, God. Vanessa, call the dang roll.
Chair Fleming.
Fleming, yes.
Vice Chair Milliken.
Milliken, yes.
Treasurer Davis.
Davis, yes.
Secretary DeVarty.
DeVarty, yes.
Trustee Hatcher.
Hatcher, yes.
Trustee Lando.
Lando, and I would note that is Jean-Luc Picard.
And Trustee McKnight Morton.
McKnight Morton, yes.
Thank you. Meeting adjourned.